Councilmember Gossett, we have some special guests who have joined us today. Your remarks kicked off perhaps this part of the meeting. And we want to do a couple of things. And one is our wonderful TV station, KCTV, has prepared a little video, which I think might be an appropriate kickoff. And then I think we have some folks that will be welcome, first your colleagues here on the dais, and then anybody who has joined us. I see our assessor, John Arthur Wilson, is here, and there may be others. Councilmember Durdowski has joined us, and others who may want to come to the podium. I'm getting a signal, who am I missing? Pardon? Sheila Capastani is here, and she's our children's czar at the county, and has worked with Councilmember Gossett from way back in the day. If you go to the El Centro de la Raza, you see Sheila's picture up in that famous room with you, Councilmember Gossett.
As well as her husband.
As well as her husband. A number of members of your staff are here, including the Gaten family, very prestigious Seattle family. So let's roll the tape.
The year 1968. The nation was reeling after the assassinations of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
I think that what we're doing at the present time in Vietnam is a mistake.
And Robert Kennedy. Thousands demonstrated against the Vietnam War, and the Beatles released the White Album. In Seattle, political activist Larry Gossett was protesting the treatment of black students at his alma mater, Franklin High School. He was arrested. His jail cell was on the 12th floor of the King County courthouse. Ironically, the same floor where his county council office would be decades later. Larry Gossett grew up in the Central Area. He graduated from the University of Washington in 1970, receiving the UW's first-ever degree in African-American Studies. He was a founder of the Black Student Union. He continued his activism and became part of a celebrated revolutionary political alliance known as the Gang of Four. The founder of El Centro de la Raza, Roberto Majestas; Bernie Whitebeard of the Seattle Indian Health Board; Bob Santos, a leader in the Asian community; and Larry, the executive director of the Central Area Motivation Program. In other cities, those populations tended to be segregated. But because of their unity and their friendship, it immediately sent a message to, especially to people of color in the Seattle and King County region, that the struggles of one are the struggles of us all.
They figured out early and led Seattle in civil rights and racial equality, coming together to work together on common causes, and individual causes that needed mutual support. And that's the kind of organizing that's successful.
In 1993, Gossett got involved in electoral politics. He won a seat on the Metropolitan King County Council, representing an area stretching from the Montlake Cut to Beacon Hill.
I call Larry the conscience of the council, the bending of the arc of justice, the arc of history toward a more just society. That is the touchstone, the guiding light that I think motivates Larry Gossett in all of his work and everything he's done.
Larry is the guy who has, by his example, by his experience, by his leadership, has reminded us that we need to care about racial equity in this community, that people are being left behind every single day, and we can do a better job and must do a better job for those folks. And he's the guy who always reminds us of that.
In 1996, building on the initial idea of former King County Council members Bruce Lang and Ron Sims, Gossett was a prime mover in changing the county logo, from that of a 19th-century slaveholder to that of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
I was really proud of that, and those were all Larry Gossett's pushes. He and Ron Sims, former executive, went back to DC and met with representatives of the family of Dr. King. It is rare when you literally get a work next to somebody who is a civil rights legend. I mean, literally, every day.
I think Larry's going to have a long-term legacy as the heart of the King County Council. He makes decisions based on what he knows in his heart is the right thing for the people he represents. Being that heart and that voice for people who most need it is going to be Larry's legacy.
Larry's a really good listener. He will listen to your ideas, but he's inquisitive, and so he's willing to listen and to see what's different. He's done a lot of work on making sure that people that were underserved are thoroughly thought about. His legacy will be that nobody will ever be forgotten again.
We were sworn in at the same time, but he had the advantage of Rhonda. See, he has a partner in Rhonda that is not just his wife, but she was his partner in the community. We got two for the price of one, because Larry and Rhonda worked together as a team to help us all be better on the issues that were before us.
He would see people who were off the streets, I mean, literally. And if he was available, he would visit with them. I arranged probably a couple of times per month for him to go over to the King County Jail and visit with someone at the behest of their family member. I don't know of another elected official nationwide that would do that.
He is a, he's the people's person. He's given a lot of access and allowed people to see how it works by coming to his office, by going to them in the community, and by hosting town hall meetings and other things that are really important to a large spectrum of the community, not just one particular portion.
Every day, every hour, he's on the phone with people in the community. I think that Councilmember Gossett's legacy is still an open book. I expect he's going to achieve a lot more, even in retirement.
Congratulations, Larry. We really appreciate your 25 years of hard work and service to the people of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King County. Thank you so much for your excellent work and service.
Congratulations, Dad, for 25 years of service to the people.
Well, let's have a moment here to have colleagues share remarks. I'm going to just briefly start, and then I'll turn it over. I've got a sign, I've got a visual aid, Councilmember Gossett. You saw a lot of signs, and you saw a lot of pictures of Councilmember Gossett's activism and taking it to the streets. And I feel really fortunate to have been able to participate with Larry in a march through Seattle to oppose the travel ban. And Larry carried the sign. There we are, walking down the street.
Ryan, this time it's Dumball.
The best I could do, and Councilmember Durdowski, you'll appreciate this, was have the solidarity sign, right, from Poland. But that was a night I'll never forget, and it showed your continued commitment to human rights around the world, to civil rights here in America, and to actively fighting for those rights. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our colleagues on the dais, and then we'll invite former Chair Larry Phillips to say a few words, and Councilmember Durdowski, and Assessor Wilson, and others who would like to share their memories of you. Larry, Councilmember Balducci, would you be willing to start?
Sure, thank you. I think we're all going to wax on quite a bit about big philosophy and your historic stature, but I want to talk about something very personal. I don't know if you recall the first time we ever met, but I do. I was an employee within King County. We had not talked on the phone many times. Like, when I was jail director, we talked on the phone many times. But long before that, when I was just a labor relations person, I was wandering the halls of the tunnels in between the county courthouse and the Chinook Building and the admin building, and I was lost. And I couldn't find my way to the parking garage, and I came upon Councilmember Gossett. And I was like, "Councilmember Gossett," because I know who you were, "I'm lost, and you took me by the arm, and you said, 'Don't worry, Councilmember Gossett's got you.'" And you walked me to the parking garage. And I just think, like, looking back now, that that is so much who you are. You're the person who, when somebody says, "I need help," you're the guy to take them by the arm and show them where to go and help them. And you've spent so much of your time, I mean, we're next-door neighbors on the 12th floor, and I can hear through that wall, they're not as thick as you think. I can hear through that wall, late at night, almost every night, there are people in there coming to visit, and they're constituents. And he takes so much of his personal time just serving individual members of the public with whatever problem they might have. And I just think that is so rare and so valuable, and it says so much about who you are as a person. So your historical legacy and your place in the civil rights movement nationally and in the Pacific Northwest, I think, it's amazing. But I will always remember your heart for people and individuals, and that nobody's problem was too small for you to get personally involved in. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure serving with you.
Councilmember up the road? No, it's a, you don't have to, we don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where to start? You know, I think in politics, we all have role models. We have people we look up to and try to emulate that we've learned from. And one of those people that I've had the opportunity to learn from is Councilmember Just watching a fellow colleague and seeing how you make your decisions, and in a political environment that in a lot of ways is broken, there's a lot of, you know, the political process nowadays isn't necessarily what our founders imagined, to see someone who roots and grounds their decisions not based on who's for it and who's against it, or what do the big donors think, or what's going to advance me politically in the next election, but who weighs what are the impacts on people who don't have a voice in the process, people who don't have paid lobbyists? You know, it's sort of like you've taken up that role to be the advocate for the people who don't have advocates, and to root your decision-making in that is something that's admirable and something that I aspire to emulate, if I can. This place won't be the same without you. You've been a rock. There's a certain steadiness, I think, you bring, both institutional knowledge and history. There's always, on any body, people talk about they're the conscience of the body or the heart of the body, the kind of person, when they speak, everyone gets a little bit quieter. You know, maybe there's a big contentious debate, and then Larry speaks up and has his words of wisdom and helps us get through it to the ending. And that's going to be missed, I think. But as someone said, I think, as Councilmember Cole Wells in her video said, "I have no doubt that you're going to be very engaged and continue to be a role model and continue to do great things." So I'll miss you.
Larry's very dear and close friend on the council, Councilmember Lambert.
That makes me very happy to have that title.
Is that right?
It is, it is. I just want to tell you that it's been a pleasure sitting next to you for the last 18 years, because we have been in each other's arms for 18 years, as you can see. And during those years, we've kind of gone back and forth. You're the chair of Law and Justice, and then I'm the chair, and then you're the chair, and I'm the chair. And we've gone back and forth being each other's vice chair. And I really will always remember the work you have done on A-Job and J-Job, and the fact that we have one less jail in King County today because we never had to build a second one for adults because of your work. And I remember early on, when we first started talking, you said, "How come," can I say it really? "How come a white woman understands this stuff?" And I said, "Oh, okay." I knew then we were going to be really good friends. The things that you've done on housing and having a housing center named after you. But I want to talk about our long conversations, and I don't mean just about how come our phones are not working together, because we've had lots of conversations about phones. But I picture you on a jail tour that we went on early on. And we went on the jail tour, and we had Judge Sinclair with us. And I turned around to ask somebody something, and the two of you disappeared on me, and I couldn't find you. And I found the two of you sitting on a bed in a jail cell, and I looked at the two of you, and I had to just laugh so hard at thinking about both of your histories. And yet here you both were, were sitting on a jail cell, so I could find you and get you out of there. I remember how you took care of me when I broke my knee. Nobody helped me as much as you. I had terrible things happen to me during that, and I would come to you and talk to you about what had happened, and you were always supportive. And I think you would have even had all those knobs taken off the day I got injured on those. You were so upset about that. I remember our tour to the Duval Museum, when they had antique tools, and you had to learn how to use all those antique tools, including how to remove a shoe boot, and how fun that was. I remember the days that we went to the Carnation Farms, and you learned about new calves, and how they're taken care of, and how to melt. Yes, we got into all kinds of things. I remember that Rhonda had to find you jeans because she didn't know you owned them, but we had Rhonda find them. I remember the day that we went out and climbed in a treehouse together, because we had to talk about channel migration, and you looked out the window and you said, "How come it's like that?" And I said, "Oh, you're really smart. That's called channel migration." And I didn't have to explain it to you because you saw it out the window. So that was fun, and we enjoyed our picnic out on the balcony. I remember you taking me to Juneteenth and saying, "I didn't know you liked to dance so much." And I said, "Oh, yeah, but you never invited me back."
It might have been Rhonda.
And last but not least, I remember our trip to Skikomish, and how we had to stop at every little town with the sign, so you could show the boys in the hood that you actually had been to all those. Yeah, you've been out in the country. So we stopped at each one, and every time I've been to Skikomish since, I've sent you a picture, until you finally said, "Why do you keep sending me the same picture?" And it was because I wanted you to know that I was thinking about you, too, because we had such a good time in Skikomish, your little town experience. So I know you'll have amazing next chapters, but I hope that they're filled with as much fun as I know that we've had together. Thank you.
That's very sweet. Thank you, Councilmember Lambert, Councilmember McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Gossett, the nice thing about an opportunity like this is little-known facts about you get to come out in public.
That's true.
And one of the many little-known facts about Councilmember Gossett is something he and I have in common, and that is, we're both native Seattleites. You're saying you knew that. We were both born in Seattle hospitals and driven to West Seattle as infants' home for the first time. So I like to think of you as a fellow West Seattleite. I know you're LG from the CD, but I know you're really a West Seattleite. And you've been on the phone with me long before we were colleagues as well. I remember cutting my political teeth, working in politics in Seattle just after I graduated from college. And it was about five years ago, I was digging through a box in my basement and found phone messages I had received from Councilmember Gossett, from Larry Gossett at camp, that I needed to call back from work I was doing in the late 80s and early 90s. So opportunities well before we got to be colleagues and friends here at the council, and profound work together here at the council. I remember even as I was seeking appointments to the council a decade ago, meeting with you at the Starbucks at 23rd and Jackson, and being interviewed, not just asked a few questions, I was being interviewed, appropriately so, and with good, solid questions that needed to be answered, needed to be discussed. Like, what is disproportionality? Tell me in your own words. It really does, because you make sure that the real values that we need to address in our community are part of the conversation and part of the work we're engaged in. I've been proud to be able to work with you here on this council on further issues like pre-trial release for people awaiting trial here in King County, some contentious issues here on the council, and being able to work together on some of those has been very important to me. And it's been even a bigger value to me to call you a colleague and a friend. I want you to know that I will not hold it against you, that your wife's favorite photo, the best photo she's ever taken, was with me. And I will not hold against you the fact that you have destroyed and deleted that photograph.
Oh, some insight there. Let me some follow-up on that. Cue the public records request. Councilmember Lambert, Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I feel like I'm losing a dear, beloved colleague, and also a dear and beloved friend. And of anybody on this council, for me, I've been able to relate to Councilmember Gossett the most. I think we share so much in terms of our political views, our beliefs in what's right and what needs to be done. And I'll never, ever forget all that you've meant to me here. I have a little gift that I'm going to give you later, but the card, I just wanted to share. And it's a picture of a globe, a very colorful globe, and it says, "Be the change you wish to see in the world," from Gandhi, but I added in, "Continue to be the change you wish to see in the world." And I wrote, "Dear Larry, that's who you've been, how you are now, and how I anticipate you will continue to be, with affection and deep respect." And that is, you embody that, the change the world needs to have take place. And even though, I mean, jokes aside about you're representing so incredibly well the constituents in District 2, I think you represent all people in this whole county. It's not district-specific in so many ways. Thank you for all you've been.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole Wells. We'll conclude members' remarks with Larry Gossett's classmate, Councilmember Von Rechbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Class of 93.
I, when I spoke on the video, it was true and accurate, as he well knows. The best decision he made was the decision to marry that lady out there with the red, because she has been such a rock for him and the family, and the wonderful kids he and she have. When I first got to know Larry, I got to know Malcolm, because three of us went to a football game together, and I realized the incredible family that was coming into the King County Council with me. I was a little intern when I first met Larry. He'll tell you the story. But in fact, Oklahoma has Will Rogers, who said he'd never met a stranger. King County has Larry Gossett, who has never met a stranger. I've been with him throughout this county, whether it's rural, urban, or suburban, he shows up. Number two, I've been around the world with him. We have been in villages in China, we have been in South America on economic development projects. He has never met a stranger. He greets everybody as if he's known them for at least five years. They come back as better, because he is, you know, we talk about historically, some of us remember the book, The Ugly American, but right now, this is The Beautiful American, because when he goes across the ocean and talks to people, he puts forth the image of our country that we want. He cares about people, he cares about their well-being, and he reflects our values. Larry, thank you, and thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, colleagues. We are really pleased to be joined today by Councilmember Larry Phillips, who I would like to invite to the podium, unless he wants to exercise his floor privileges and come onto the dais. The choice is his. Thank you for being here, Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's always great to be back with all of you, and still thank you all of you as my colleagues. And I've been enjoying all of the great remarks that you've shared about Councilmember Gossett, and what a great member of our community, a great leader of our community, and all the great memories you personally had to share with all of us about your time together. Just picking up a little bit on Councilmember McDermott's thoughts about little-known facts about Larry Gossett. You've all known him a long time. I think, with the exception of maybe a few people in this audience, I've known Larry a lot longer. In fact, I've known him since 1965, when he was in the midst of a very successful athletic career at, count them, two different high schools in the Seattle region. And he was a basketball player, and I was the one who thought someday maybe I could actually get on the same court and play maybe a little bit like Larry did. But he was at Garfield and had to transfer to Franklin, which is not an easy thing to do in high school, and it's not an easy thing to do when you're trying to be a member of a team and be competitive and be successful. He made that transition, and I like to think that that's competitive by nature, but that's where Larry's leadership skills really got honed, at that time, early in his life, leading a team at Garfield, and then also leading a team at Franklin. And I got to witness that, because as a young student in high school, or not quite in high school, I was four years behind, I used to go to those high school games. I was there for some of those epic, and I mean epic at the time, Franklin and Garfield games. And the reason I mention that is because I'm one of the few people, and I only tease Larry about this in private, and I never do it in an audience, and I never do it when the TV's on. And I certainly wouldn't do that here today, Larry, but I actually got to see Larry Gossett play a lot of basketball in his short shorts. And those are memories that I'll never forget. Back and forth, back and forth. But he'll tell you more of the details about some of those games, but he played an incredible role on both teams, particularly at Franklin, in some of those epic battles. But it didn't end there. I actually had a chance to go on the University of Washington when he was there, and for those who know what it was like to be on campus in 1970, it's really remarkable, given how tumultuous it was at the time, that any of us ever got a degree, because there was so much chaos and it was so contentious. Larry's leadership skills came to the fore once again in a different manner, which is on a contentious set of issues, bringing them forward so people had to pay attention to them, but in a way in which there was a positive outcome for so many people. Difficult, yes, lots of headlines and whatnot, but nonetheless, great outcomes for our community, for the University of Washington, and again, marking the early elements of a great leadership capacity in Councilmember Gossett. I, too, had the privilege of serving with him on this council for 22 years, in many different capacities, our paths crossed on policy, program, and budget. Some of the work was behind the scenes, a lot of it was out in the public relative to the changes that we've all witnessed and heard about today. Your comments about that have been eloquent. Not all of the issues, though, at the county are seen by the public, not all the work is seen by the public. Larry is little-known, but he chaired our County Growth Management Committee and became a student of land use in this region when he was doing so much other work as well. And I always appreciated your capacity to care about the natural resources of King County and land use issues. But that aside, he also served on the Employment Committee. No one knows what the Employment Committee is, except those who serve on that committee.
Some of us do.
It is difficult and arduous work, but it leads to the hiring of extraordinary people serving the public here in King County, the beloved community, as Larry would say so often. That leaves a lasting legacy relative to the work that goes on here in this county. And it's tedious work, sitting through a lot of meetings, interviewing a lot of candidates, and picking the cream of the crop among them to serve the people of King County. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that aren't quite so obvious, but nevertheless so indelibly you, Larry, and your leadership skills to bring teams together and to make a difference for so many. So it's an honor to be here today. I don't come back very often, but I would not fail to come back and honor you today for your great service to people of King County.
Next. Councilmember Dunn.
Real quick. Wait for it. Larry Gossett for president, everybody! LT, Ben, I disloge you, and I have been so honored to work with you. If I could accomplish one quarter of what you've accomplished in my career, I consider it a successful one. I wish you the best, but one thing I know you're good at, great at being an activist. So you might be going up the council today, but tomorrow you'll be coming right back, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, my friend. I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Durdowski.
Larry, I only had the pleasure of serving with you for seven years. And you taught me everything I know about, about civil rights in King County. And, and I taught you everything you know about conditional use permits and planned urban developments and rezones and everything else. The, you know, you, you all are, appear to be a very collegial group of people. You put on your best faces in public. But I also know that the body has probably improved over the years. And the years that I was on, I, you know, things could get awfully tense. It was partisan, Republican, Democrat, and things got tense. I remember in 1999, as a matter of fact, I have one poster on my wall, one plaque. You get a lot of plaques, you know? I had one plaque, and it's from the Black Trade Unionist from 1999. Because that year, the county council took a highly partisan vote on affirmative action. And I split with the party. And as a result, we did not pass a resolution approving the abolishment of affirmative action. And of course, I was facing a reelection and a primary, and that didn't do me any good. But I'll tell you what, the, the years that I spent with Larry Gossett led me to that point where it became a, a, a choice of conscience to make that vote. And that's, it's an evolutionary process. I do want to stick up for my dad. My dad, World War II veteran, Navy veteran, and was, dealt with everybody he ever met with tremendous respect and open-heartedness. He was a, his politics were pretty conservative, and so were mine. The Vietnam War, the issues about Martin Luther King were controversial. But over time, his views changed. I remember a number of comments that he made over the years. And of course, many of our views have changed over time. But then, when you get right down to it, issues are, they come and go, and things change. But your character and your principles and who you are, and your heart, and your family, those things endure. Those things last. And I know that on the toughest days at the county council, when things were really fractious, I knew that I could always go into Larry's office and sit down, and it was a haven for goodwill and good humor. And I'm a detailed kind of guy. And I would go into, you know, tons and tons of things, you know, and swap you with details. And, and your style, I was always amazed at you, Larry, because you have this way of sort of absorbing all that and then coming out at the equity center logical point where you want to go. You just have this instinct. You have this instinct toward the fair. Instinct toward the fair. And that was, that was always, that's a wonderful attribute. Now, you're about ready to leave this joint. And I can, and, and I can tell you, well, I tell you what, you know, I know, I'll tell you a few things about it. The first thing is, you're going to have a heck of a lot more fun. There is no doubt about it. And then the second thing I can tell you is that you'll find it anyway, but there are ample opportunities to serve the public interest. You will find that, as I did, that despite what I felt, King County was not the center of the universe. And in fact, there's a big, huge world that needs civility, needs you, needs that, that, that Larry Gossett approach. Because we do need civility. And Larry, you've got civility coming out your ears. So I look forward to breaking bread with you and breaking bread with all of you at the, at the, at the little get-together, assuming I'm invited. And, and thank you for working for the public interest.
Thank you, Councilmember Durdowsky. The floor privileges apply to the 12th floor too, so you're, you're in, you're in like Flynn. Longtime county family member for, worked in the executive's office, now our assessor. I was, first got to know him serving on the city club board. We are really glad you're here today, Assessor John Arthur Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Larry, thank you. We go back with Rhonda, Larry, and I went to the UW together. And, you know, in a world where often, politics seems so fractious and so tribal, and too often driven by polls just for the sake of polls, there is one person you could look to as a constant, a person who was authentic and real, real to his very core, and that was Larry Gossett. And it is Larry Gossett today. And that very authenticity that Larry brought to office is something I try to strive to reach myself. I traveled the county a lot, and I travel the nation on behalf of the county through the National Association of Counties, Assessors Association. I proudly wear this pin. And I never put that pin on without thinking about Larry. We worked with Larry when I was Chief of Staff for Executive Sims to take that step. And it's always interesting, the reaction you get to people, because they ask, "That pin, what's that for?" I said, "It's because I work for Martin Luther King, County, Washington." And I tell the story a bit about how it became real and the role that Councilmember Gossett played in that. And that ultimately, what it represented was both his values and our values as a community to be one that stands for equity and justice for all. Larry, bless you, and all my best.
We are going to recognize Councilmember Gossett's staff in a moment here, but I wanted to make an opportunity available for anybody else to share a few words. I think she had to go. Oh, Sheila, Sheila Capastani, thank you, Councilmember Lambert. Sheila, thanks for being here.
Yes, it's my honor to be here, actually. And I want to keep my remarks short, but it is true that the Capastanis and Larry Gossett go way back to the days of occupying of El Centro. My, my former husband was one of the little children in all of those pictures and singing on the front steps of the building. So that was a legacy that I came into when I married into the family, came in as a 19-year-old. I actually first met Larry Gossett when I was a 22-year-old youth worker in a meeting at camp. And I don't think that you remember that, but you were Larry Gossett for us. We were having a meeting there as a bunch of young women sitting around, and we saw you walk by, and someone said, "Oh my God, that's Larry Gossett." It was like this, this sighting of a star. And you had glanced by when you walked by, and so we were about to start a meeting, and you turned around and came into the room, and you said hi to us, and you asked us what we were doing. And you spent a couple of minutes with us, just figuring out what it was we were working on and what we were doing there. And that has always stayed in my mind because we were so impressed that you were the executive director of this organization, and we didn't even work for your organization, but you stopped to see what we were doing. We were clearly super young. So I guess what I want to say is just thank you for being an inspiration for the generation that came up behind you. We watched you, we learned from you, we understood that we were going to be standing on your shoulders. You were a mentor to us, sometimes in our interactions and sometimes from afar. We just got to watch and learn how to be good activists. And I would say thank you for being a mentor and an activist for my daughter, who, over the last few years, ever since she met you five years ago, anytime anything happens, she's like, "Should I call Larry Gossett about this?" So you might want to thank me for not having to show up at her school all the time to deal with some of the issues. So I just say that, thank you again. I just really want you to know that we will continue the legacy. And I think mostly what I want to say is that your legacy of strength and of keep on keeping on and of pushing forward and in the end of, of the kind of deep, strong, passionate love that actually lets you have the kind of sense of humor that you have even in the face of some really difficult situations have been an inspiration to me. So thank you.
I know there are many folks here in the Ledge Branch from the staff level that would like to say a few words, but maybe I could ask our Chief of Staff, Carolyn Bush, if she would share a few words.
Mr. Gossett, I, you know that I just think the world of you and that in working here for the last six years, that you've touched my heart and the heart of members of my family, but particularly my son Wyatt, who really looks up to you. And you've been a tremendous resource to me in terms of how to be a better parent to him. And in fact, you share that with Councilmember Von Reichbauer as well, just really helping me as a single mom raising a boy and trying to raise a good young man. And I've so appreciated our friendship and, and, and watching you as a human being and my boss and just your willingness, as other people have said, to not ever care about somebody's positional authority, but to just care about all of us as people. And so as I am lucky enough to work with the incredible staff that I work with here and see you treat each of them with respect and dignity, you're, you're a role model to me and to so many others, and we're going to miss you so much. You're, you, you know how I feel about you. I just love you and have so appreciated the honor it's been to work for a living legend and someone with whom I share so many values. And thank you for everything, every single thing.
Okay, I'm going to turn here in the last 10 minutes to our final part of this program before we go get a little snack, and that is to recognize Councilmember Gossett's staff. Councilmember Gossett, as you know, Martin Luther King said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve," right? And I'll repeat it, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve." And that quote reminds each of us in public service about the importance of our work and the importance of those who do it in partnership with us. We all know that we could not accomplish anything here without the partnership, allyship, and support of our staff. And with your retirement, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the staff who has worked with you most recently today. And I think we're going to go, well, we're starting with the youngest one. Chandler Gaten. Welcome, Chandler. Why don't you, I'm going to come down and use the podium, it's kind of akin to our usual staff recognition. You're in charge. Take that gap.
Yeah, but look at it, it doesn't have a cap in you, all right.
With the consent of our Vice Chair Balducci and Vice Chair Dunn, I'd like Councilmember Gossett to chair this portion of the meeting. Chandler, what a blessing you have been and a terrific addition to the 12th floor. Why don't you come on down? It's like the Price is Right. You have been here for three years. And for those of you that don't know, Chandler is a Seattle native, graduating from O'Day High School in 2009, where he was a star defensive back. Chandler's family, the Gaten family, I see Carver is here, and your mom Carmen taking the pictures. Go ahead and embarrass him a little bit. A terrific, incredible family with deep Seattle roots and history that you have brought that legacy to your work here. Your dad, Carver, and your Uncle Gary are members of the UW's 150 Most Distinguished Alumni list. You've got some tall orders there to live up to. And you're doing that just, just fine. Chandler, you are going to be a UW alumni after your graduation from the Evans School. Is that right, where you are now? Where you're earning your master's degree, you're doing that full-time, you're working here, and you got the real estate gig going, right? Helping mom. All right, all right, a little bit of help. Chandler gives back to our community through service on various boards, including Treehouse Young Professionals Board and the O'Day Alumni Board. Chandler, you are one who helps Councilmember Gossett on health and human services issues. You were instrumental in helping pass the Renters Commission, brand-new terrific legislation that Councilmember Gossett worked on with Councilmember Cole Wells, to work on issues affecting renters in unincorporated King County. You have been a kind and fun presence on the 12th floor, and we hope not to miss you. We hope to continue to see you around. Would you all please join me in honoring Chandler Gaten for three years of service?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for those kind remarks. Councilmember Gossett, a lot of people don't know this, but my parents remember. But if it wasn't for Larry, I thank you for everything, for where I am today, for getting into the Evans School, everything. Three years ago, I had a meeting scheduled with the officer recruiter for the Navy, and that officer recruiter missed the meeting. And that same day, Larry called me and said, "Do you, do you still want to work on my staff?" And so, just thinking about how different my life would have been without you taking me under your wing, giving me a chance when nobody else would, I really do appreciate that. Outside of my parents, you've been the, the best mentor that I could ever have, and I really do, you've made me a better person, as well as that. So I really do appreciate that, Larry. Thanks.
I want to thank and recognize another member of your staff who is not able to join us today, but did an outstanding job narrating the video, Larry Evans. I understand he's, Larry is not here. Larry, let me just say a few words, because what a tremendous human being Larry Evans is, a tremendous public servant who has worked in your office since March of 2007. And like you, Larry has spent his life serving others in the Seattle area, as a youth football coach, as a firefighter, as a mentor, as a gang intervention specialist, an author, a legislative aide. He has truly made King County and Seattle a better place. You heard Larry Evans in the video mention Councilmember Gossett's visits to jails and folks in jail and prison. What you didn't hear is that Larry Evans spends his free time on weekends doing the same. He has been a tremendous advocate for criminal justice reform and being a one-on-one person to help those who are getting back on the road to life outside of a prison and jail. Larry and his partner Diane, our father to Roberto, who many of us have met over the years, and Serena, and a grandfather as well. He loves his family and loves visiting his mother at his Madrona childhood home most weekends, where, knowing Larry, Larry Evans, this is true, he still mows the lawn, all right? Taking care of mom. Larry has been, I want to say, a particular friend to the District 1 office and our staff. He's located next to us, and we formed a special bond. And he has been a tremendous leader in our council's equity and social justice work in advancing that and, as well as working on our criminal justice reform in the youth arena, right, around ending the school-to-prison pipeline and creating a school-to-opportunity pipeline. Larry Evans is somebody who I'm proud to call a personal friend, and we are going to miss him greatly, but look forward to continuing to see him around. Please join me, even though he isn't here right now, in thanking and honoring Larry Evans. Camila, where are you? Hey, get up here. Camila Brown, it is an honor to recognize you and for your work here at the county. As Camila puts it, she has spent her adult life working for Larry Gossett. She graduated from the University of Maryland, you're a Terrapin, is that right? Is that like a turtle or something? What is a Terrapin? Okay, that's a turtle. She, and after graduating from the University of Maryland, she began her service to District 2 as an intern, as an intern, and for the last 15 years as a legislative aide. She has left an indelible mark on King County as she has helped Councilmember Gossett implement the county's logo change to Dr. King, an incredible achievement, something to be so proud of. And she also helped work on the creation of the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight, OLEO. OLEO, to provide strengthened civilian oversight of our police department, our sheriff's department. She is a regular committee member for our annual Martin Luther King Day celebration. Camila is also a role model parent. I've seen your lovely daughter, right, around lately. We have watched her raise her 10-year-old daughter, Mira, who's kind, smart, and funny over the years. And it's a treat every time she comes to the floor. We've been blessed with her presence. Is she here today? She's been coming in a lot lately. No, not today, okay. In her free time, Camila continues her service as the co-chair of the Social Justice Ministry at her church, of course. And you love spending time with your family, traveling, bowling, and trying out new restaurants. Camila will continue to pursue her master's degree. You are going to be missed. She is the front and the face of the office. She is the person that, when you try to see Councilmember Gossett, gives you that look, like, no. Or, you can try, but don't tell him I said you could try. And a wonderful friend to the floor, a true part of our family. Please join me in honoring and celebrating for 15 years of service, Camila Brown.[941.87][941.87](APPLAUSE)
Thank you for this, recognizing my service here to the King County Council. As the chair just said, it's a very emotional day for me. I've grown up in this office. And so this being my first job out of undergrad, to see it come to an end is bittersweet. I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Gossett for, I kind of have a different style sometimes when I'm dealing with you, but you know that I love you and that I care for you deeply, which is why I'm so very protective. And I can sometimes give the look because I'm like, oh, my goodness, this is like the 15th interruption that we've had. But it's all out of love. It has been an honor to serve the people of King County. This was kind of my dream job when I was in undergrad. I have a degree in African-American Studies, Public Policy. And so I wanted to work in the political scene for someone that shared the same political values that I did. And so coming to work for you was a complete honor and will continue to be the highlight of my career. I look forward to the next phase of my career. You've taught me well. I know a lot of things because you've given me a lot of opportunity to work not just as your front desk person, but to also do policy, to do community work, to do constituent work, to, you know, all of the areas of the office. You have given me an opportunity, and for that, I am eternally grateful. Me and Mira love you very much. And so I look forward to seeing what you're going to do in the future.
Last, but certainly not least, please welcome up to the podium Cindy Domingo.[1062.83][1062.83](APPLAUSE) Did I meet your brother or you first? Probably your brother. The Domingo family is a special family to me, being a Renton kid. Her brother, Nemesio, was a first political mentor. He served on the Renton School Board. And I learned a lot about civil rights and the history of this community and the Filipino community and the labor movement from the Domingo family. And to get to serve on this floor alongside Cindy has been an honor, equivalent to that, serving alongside you, Councilmember Gossett. Cindy Domingo is that kind of person. She's spent nearly five decades as a political activist working for social chains locally, nationally, and internationally, all over the world, in Cuba, in the Philippines. Wherever there are folks whose rights are being threatened, who are being discriminated against, Cindy Domingo has gone to fight for them and lifted them up. She's worked aside, alongside Councilmember Gossett for, I can't even believe this, 36 years? 36 years. And for the first 10 years, that was at the Camp Central Area Motivation Program. And the last 26 years here in his council office, serving as Chief of Staff. You going to last that long, Christina?[1150.04][1150.04](LAUGHTER) I think that was a no.[1156.94][1156.94](LAUGHTER) She began her political career as a member of the U.S.-based Union of Democratic Filipinos, KDP, in the early 1970s, fighting to end the U.S.-supported Marcos dictatorship. She serves on the Board of Lelo, now called Legacy of Equality and Leadership. It used to be the Labor and Employment Law Office. They gave me a little bit of money to help get through college to serve at the Japanese-American Citizens League as an intern. She's been involved with Lelo and their work since the '70s. And she has served on the boards of many prominent national women's organizations, including international ones, the National Asian-Pacific American Women's Forum and the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. Locally, in addition to her work with Lelo, she has served with the Church Council of Greater Seattle, the Asian-Pacific American Labor Alliance, and for the International Examiner newspaper. As if that were not enough, she is an extensively published writer, giving yet another outlet for her energy, enthusiasm, and ability for building peace, democracy, and solidarity with those experiencing injustices all over the world. Your 26 years here on the council, during that time, you've worked tirelessly to promote equity and social justice. We say that. Most of us don't know what that means. You do. And we know it's not easy. And you are consistently the stalwart who stands up and makes us have the tough conversations, makes us have the tough conversations. And our community and this organization has benefited tremendously from it, Cindy. Your husband, Gary Owens, alongside you, you've raised two children, Jamil and Malek. You've earned your retirement. But I don't think she's going to retire. You've earned it more than most. But I do know, I think that we will see you continuing to work in the community, working on all of the issues that you care about. You're going to be a particularly difficult loss to this floor and to me personally. I love you, I love your family. And we thank you on behalf of the council for your service to the residents of King County and Councilmember Gossett.[1291.04][1291.04](APPLAUSE)
Thank you so much. Like Camila, this is very emotional for me, too. But unlike Camila, this was not my dream job.[1325.33][1325.33](LAUGHTER) And it, I'm going to tell you a story how we ended up here, Larry and I. When Norm Rice moved up to mayor, we worked together to try to get Larry appointed to Norm Rice's position on the city council. We were not successful. But when they redistricted King County, I went up to Larry and I said, "Have you thought about being King County Councilmember?" And he said, "Oh, well, that's an idea." And we were successful in it. And so I thought that was the end of it. He would go on and become a council member. And then I asked him, "You know, there are people who want to come work for you. And so you better think about your staff." And he said, "No, I already promised someone." And I said, "Well, who was that? You didn't talk to me about that." And he said, "Well, you." And I said, "Oh, no, 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 no. I like politics, but not that kind of politics." And then eventually, my husband said, "Well, you should go work there because you probably make a little bit more money than you did at camp." And so it took me a good five years to decide that this was the kind of public service that I was going to do. And it took me a little while to really kind of like it. But, and I will miss being in the mix of things. And I think like what Brian Dardaski said, it'll take getting used to not being in the mix of things. But I know also that there is a life outside of this county council. And I've met some wonderful people here that I've enjoyed working with. And I was glad to work on this final piece of, this final ordinance on civil and human rights. And I thank Christina Logston and Rod Dombowski for having that opportunity to work together on this piece of legislation. And it is a wonderful way to end a career here. I thank Mike Reed, who I've learned a lot from, and Andrew Kim, who worked on this last piece of legislation, two wonderful people who I think I share a lot with in terms of philosophy, values, and principles. And thank you so much for the opportunity to work here. Thank you, Larry, for 36 years of employment. But I think we could take a break.[1492.04][1492.04](LAUGHTER) You know, it's kind of like you're, Rhonda's his at-home spouse. I'm his, probably his at-work spouse. And oftentimes, you need a break in order to get along in the long term. You know, I mean, it's been 36 years, every day, right? And yeah, and so I think, I mean, you all know what we mean, right?[1526.24][1526.24](LAUGHTER) And so thank you for the opportunity. And thank you to the council members for the opportunity to work here. And I've met some wonderful people here and worked with wonderful staff over the years. And I'm happy to retire, though. I've got a lot of things to do, and I'm happy I had this long experience working here.[1553.41][1553.41](APPLAUSE)
Thank you all. Michelle Clark, don't go out the door, please. It's the first time I've ever said, "Don't do something," right? A longtime staff member who has gone on, under Councilmember Gossett's tutelage and supportive mentorship, to be the executive director of the King County Flood District, which invests tens of millions of dollars every year in critical flood prevention programs. We want to take a moment to recognize and thank Michelle Clark for her years of service in Councilmember Gossett's office.[1594.41][1594.41](APPLAUSE)
Supposed to have a meeting in a few minutes, so I'm trying not to cry too much. I didn't expect to say anything, but I'm not sure if you remember that 12, almost 13 years ago now, I accosted you out in the hallway here when I worked for CCAP in the community, I worked for CCAP in the Committee to End Homelessness. And I said, "Hi, Councilmember Gossett, my name's Michelle Clark, and I was told we should talk." And you invited me up to your office, and you asked me to apply for a job that you had. That's how our relationship started. Who knew that we would be here today? You have taught me the ability to bend but not break when working for issues that you care about. I have watched you. It took me a long time to figure out your style of leadership. And your style of leadership is a quiet one. You do not often make amendments because you and your staff have done the hard work before the legislation gets here to ensure that the people you got into office to represent, regardless of whether or not they work in District Two, are always served. I take to heart that you told me that I don't work for you. I work for the people in District Two and the people in King County. I think that leadership will be missed, but I think that your lesson is something that everyone will remember.
Thank you all for final words. And to adjourn the meeting when he sees fit is King County Councilmember Larry Gossett.
All I want to do at this late hour is say thank you very much for all the kind and gracious remarks made by everyone on this occasion of my retirement. Like most of you said, I will never forget. And I'll be highly appreciative of the support that I got from colleagues and staff and folks in the community over these last years, of the last quarter, century of time, that I was given the privilege of representing the people of the inner-city communities of Seattle and all those that reside here in Martin Luther King Junior County. As many of you said, you have not heard the last of me. I will go on. I would like to teach, I would like to consult. But most importantly, I would like to complete the memoirs that I started six years ago. And Rhonda already told me, "You're going to complete it in a year, brother man." So with that, we are adjourned.[1795.87][1795.87](APPLAUSE)